Meeting. Ocean Shores Plan Commission meeting via Zoom. It is Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one at two P M. And this meeting is being recorded. A roll call. Richard Wills.
Here.
All.
Yeah.
Here.
Dan Booker. Okay, do I have a motion to excuse Commissioners Cox and Brunsted?
So. I move the week, uh, excuse Commissioners Cox and Brunsted.
All was a first. Are you second?
And I'll second it.
Okay, so move. Uh, we'll get back to when Tanya gets here, we'll recognize her as joining the meeting. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll move. Okay, public comments. There we have a public comment.
I did not receive any written public comment. We do have two citizens, Dawn Williams. Do you have a public comment?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I I didn't know we were on so soon, but I just wanted to say your topic today is food trucks and um, and I I have some things you might be interested in. Um, the port of the port, the port, the Greysar Report Commission uh, uh, had a contract with a food truck. Actually, it was uh, it was actually, I believe, double barbecue, double barrel barbecue, that put their truck on the, on the um, uh, port property in Westport. And I happened to have a copy of that contract as I asked for it. And also, there, there was a food truck, a taco truck put up at the um, at the port's property where the, where the two nuclear reactor towers are. And if anybody, if you want to see those, I think they're great examples of what, what a government does to ask, ask the food trucks to do when they want to sit on their property. I'd be happy to send it to you, Dan. I think I have your email. Just let me know. And I'll get them off to you. If you're interested, you could distribute them. If you're not, that's fine. But they're interesting contracts that were signed by the port, both of them, for food trucks in two different locations. And that's, that's really all I had to say. And good luck with your discussion. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then we have Marlene Henry. Marlene, do you have a public comment?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Again, I apologize for lack of my last name. I don't know how to fix it. Um, I also on food trucks, um, a lot of good information to start out with. The uh, it is, I'm not sure whether you're looking at private property, food trucks or public property food trucks or both. But if you're looking at public, you're bound to have to extend into the topic of vending on the beach. And um, I just want to say that I think food trucks out there is not a good idea because of, of litter and, and garbage. But if you do have to extend to that and it is public property, I would definitely request that you re- uh, restrict it to a certain area. For instance, Damon to Chance, and that you require them to be temporary so that they close up and leave at the end of the day. Um, I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Before I turn this over to Richard, I think, and I don't want anybody to answer these questions, but it's something we need to think about why we're, why we're going through this. Why are we even talking about food trucks? I know that the council wants us to look into it. Why did they want us to look into it? I gotta answer that question. Do we restrict food trucks to the end of May through first of September? Can they only be here on Friday through Sunday? And what about weekends events and food trucks are already here? Would they be allowed at that time? Okay, with that, I'll give it to Richard.
So, thank you, Dan. Um, uh, everybody got a copy of, actually, I sent out uh, two distributions. I updated the second one. Uh, so as you can see, I have done a fair amount of preliminary work on the subject. I did the work because I wanted to understand the, 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 the whole issue better. Uh, and I've heard all kinds of rumors and scuttlebutt about food trucks for the five years that I've been here, but now it's on the table. Uh, so then I do, I would like to answer a couple of the questions that you posed right up front. I went back today and re-looked at the seven, twelve, twenty-one council meeting uh, that the whole issue was brought up. And I re-listened to that portion of the council meeting. Um, uh, and, and in a nutshell, uh, there were several topics that the council had considered passing off to us, and food trucks was the topic that made the cut. Um, uh, so that said, that's, that's the reason we're discussing it. If you have all read the preliminary information that, that I sent out, uh, what I wanted us all to do is, was have some, some basic understanding of the issues. Uh, and as I learn more, uh, my, my opinions and attitudes towards food trucks is evolving. So, so a, a second question that you asked is, in that city council discussion, primarily, what John Martin posed is should food trucks be seasonal? Uh, and in my information sent to you, I hadn't remembered that question, so I'm gonna start there uh, and, and say, should trucks be seasonal and, and, and what are the other commissioners' uh, opinions or feelings about food trucks? Yes, Dan?
Well, you, you didn't really answer my first question. My first question is, why does council think there's a need for food trucks?
And I, uh, thank you. I misinterpreted that question and, and I think the answer to that, I'm presuming, is because it has been such a hot topic throughout the city, but that's just a guess on my part. However, as I looked at the city's ordinance on food trucks, I find the ordinance to be very vague. Uh, and I think that it's uh, uh, I think the rewriting that ordinance may be a worthwhile endeavor. Uh, but that's not my decision, it's our decision. Uh, and so that's why I would say, what are the other commissioners' opinions uh, and thoughts on the subject and, and should we attempt to rewrite the very vague ordinance? Uh, that document has a copy taken straight out of the O S M C. Uh, you know, so what's your thoughts on? Go ahead, Eleanor.
Um, well, first, I'd like to refer to one thing Marlene brought up about vending on the beach. It seems like I read somewhere recently that I believe it was the Health Department said absolutely no to vending on the beach for food trucks. Anybody remember that?
So I, I addressed that, uh, and, and the answer is, uh, uh, Washington recently upgraded their standards or changed their standards, uh, and the new rules according to M R S C that you have to be within two hundred, within five hundred feet
Yeah, I know.
Uh, of, of, of a, of a brick and mortar hot water bathroom. That's not available on the beach. And so the Health Department will not allow food trucks on the beach. And I think in addition to that speculation on my part, Parks Department will not allow food trucks on the beach.
Well, I, I have a couple of comments. Um, one of them is, there's really only one area of town that could accommodate food trucks because of, of that rolling with the restroom, which means right downtown where we already have restaurants. I'm kind of concerned about asking citizens to weigh in on this to help with the decision. Because I want to give you an example of, of a place we went to in Australia and they had, wasn't really, well, it was a food truck. It was just a boat. And they served fish and chips and the line was a mile down the block and it was fun and it was outdoor eating. However, that makes me inclined to say, yeah, food trucks would be fun. But the flip side of that is we've got restaurants in that area that are already struggling and paying for bricks and mortar. So I have a real problem with, with giving them more competition, perhaps losing jobs for local people. And then there's also the thing, somebody will say, well, they're gonna pay taxes to the city. But a lot of that business is cash business, that it's naive to think they're gonna turn all that cash in and say, I got all this cash, let me pay you. That's not gonna happen. So I have really big concerns about allowing food trucks in.
So, so first, let me address the whole issue of survey. I think that's where you started. And survey was my, conducting a survey was my initial thought. And I'm having misgivings about, about whether a, a survey is at all appropriate or not. And I'm leaning towards saying, no, it's not. Part of why I think surveys would be meaningless during last night's city council meeting, uh, Nick Bird discussed the crosswalk survey that was in, uh, in effect, uh, for, for three months, three plus months, I think. Uh, and, and all of that time, there were fifty responses, and crosswalks are a hotter topic than food trucks. There are fifty responses with eighty comments. Uh, and, and so, so just from that standpoint, uh, I think that a, that a survey doesn't carry very much weight. Uh, and I, I know that I agree with your concern about the impact food trucks would have on brick and mortar businesses, and the impact, I think, is devastating. So I'm gonna shut up. Does anybody else have anything to want to in, inject it right now? Go ahead.
A survey. We, we can say we've just taken a survey. Ninety-nine point nine seven five percent of the population in Ocean Shores residents would say they want a food truck. So let's move past that. We have a big business community, and I might change the word from survey to questionnaire. If there's going to be any uh, deep-rooted investigation, we could have each restaurant easily um, investigated and talked to and spoken with about their feelings about food trucks. Assuming that those folks that we do the research with aren't able to come to our planning commission in some form or fashion. Because to really get to the root of this, I, I don't know how we accomplish anything without a roundtable with actual stakeholders. And whether it's four or five or six of them in a, in a, in a roundtable with us so that we can learn, none of us are in the restaurant business. So I don't even know why we would assume to be intelligent on the matter. We're all consumers. That would be where I would see a survey. And it would need to be potentially a hundred percent of the restaurants, which wouldn't be that difficult. And then I'd like to have a roundtable personally. That way I know we'd get absolutely great information.
So, so Rich, I'm very glad that you brought that up. Uh, and to that end, um, uh, Diane Solom Convention Center is one of the persons I've been trying to contact. She and I connected earlier today. On uh, on some of the documents that I sent, uh, I gave a list of the businesses that I located using the tourism page of the city's website. That list is incomplete. Diane emailed me a complete list. It's broken into two sections. Those who have email addresses and those businesses, those restaurants that only have phone numbers. And my thought on the subject is, is I think that if, as we proceed with further discussion, I agree that all of the stakeholders, all of, all of the people with a dog in the hunt, all the restaurant owners, uh, or managers, owners might be out of town, uh, deserve to have a seat at the table. But when they are at work, it's a busy season for them. They may not be able to attend. So I, I would like to suggest, as we go forward, that a subcommittee of planning commissioners contact every restaurant on Diane's list and invite them to participate, and failing their ability to participate because of staffing, that they can submit a, an email response, and I'm, I'm happy to use my uh, city email address to receive of, of, of collate uh, and, and, and then redistribute all of those emails so that every single restaurant owner has the opportunity to weigh in on the subject. So, so what I would personally like to see, um, as this discussion goes forward on a, on the next meeting, is that restaurateurs be allowed a seat at the table, just as if they were another commissioner. Uh, but the moderator of that discussion uh, would be challenged to keep all of those uh, non-commissioner uh, participants, uh, you know, to keep their discussion on topic and on point uh, without a three-minute time limit, but as they start to stray, then they be brought back on track. Uh, uh, and those who can't attend, then they can, they can uh, 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 submit their uh, their opinions via email, and we all have access to that email. I, I, I think that that gives them all an opportunity to weigh in. I'm, I'm asking other commissioners' opinions.
We, we also have the ability of having the, the handraisers, the people that are the stakeholders that are extra energetic and wanting to be involved, have a roundtable or two, get the, get the data and the information from those roundtables, and then we could go out to the rest of the restaurant community that hasn't raised their hand and get their input on what we've come up with, with the help of their peers.
You know, and, and again, Rich, I, I think that's a, a great idea. Uh, and I would go so far as to suggest uh, I would very cheerfully be part of a subcommittee uh, that went around and I, we could, we could split up and team up and, and we could, uh, small groups of, of us could canvas, be assigned and canvas different restaurants, telephone, make an appointment, and then use our smartphone as a recording device and record the conversation so that we actually are, give every restaurateur an opportunity to weigh in on the subject. Uh, so, so that's an approach that I think gives everybody a seat at, a potential seat at the table. Comments?
How many restaurants do you think are gonna be a, a real restaurant? Not the taproom. The taproom's trying to buy the food truck that I, I read you think. He's trying to get a kitchen for his business that isn't allowed to have. But other than him, and he's not, and he's not, I consider a restaurant. He doesn't serve food. So he would be, in essence, taking business away from the other brick and mortars by doing that. And then there's the gal with, uh, at the uh,
Double barrel.
Yeah, what, that wants it, but she only wants to have food trucks for uh, just the restaurants in Ocean Shores. But the restaurants in Ocean Shores, from my understanding, can't get the people to serve the people. So just food trucks for the restaurant people wouldn't help the city out if there is a problem. I'm not saying there's a problem. It, it's perceived there is a problem. But how many restaurant people do you think would say, yeah, I want to be able to bring in food trucks from outside? I don't think many. Because protecting their business.
I, I, I think that you're correct, but I have some more information. But Rich, you go and then I'll go.
All right, it's, that's the good news here. None of us are in the restaurant business. None of us actually know the answers, so we can go in with an open mind, listen to the stakeholders. We already know what our residents want, so there's sixty-two hundred voters that we know want it. There's gonna be twenty-five restaurants that participate, and we can, we can get the good information and help form some potential uh, recommendations that are fair to all. It might be something as simple as we get enough investigation going on that we decide that maybe it's the, the busy weekends, the, it, it's five weekends a year. Who, who knows what we stumble into? It's all, you know, we're all just guessing what, what we're gonna trip into fact-wise.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all, Rich. I, I, I don't, because that's what I heard. It was the hot weekends, the non-event hot weekends, that we have a huge number of people here that the restaurants couldn't manage.
And we have a lot of dynamics right now. You know, forget the fact that our restaurants are overburdened right now. They're, they're not, none of them are at a hundred percent. You know, we don't know what our town looks like with a hundred percent employment and a hundred percent occupancy. Uh, but we also need to be realistic. We could make, if the city council approved it, food trucks could be legal tomorrow, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. The problem is, there aren't food trucks to buy. There aren't extra people to man the food trucks, so this is all a little bit of a moot point. What we're gonna be working on here is maybe something that could have some traction next year, if, if we're lucky. Uh, we've missed this whole season. It's not gonna happen. But uh, food trucks aren't magically going to become available for restaurant owners to buy or, or entrepreneurs from Tacoma to buy and come down here in.
So again, you, you hit the nail squarely on the head, but here's, here's some of what I have found as I have investigated. To my knowledge, uh, the taproom would like to have a food truck. I'll speak more on that in a moment. Uh, Brady at the, at the Rosers does have a food truck and double barrel barbecue as a food truck. Double Barrel uses their food truck as a supplemental kitchen. Uh, June Born Journal, I think she pronounces her name, uh, spent a lot of money and jumped through the hoops, the Health Department hoops uh, that, that, uh, so she has a full-fledged commissary uh, to support her in building her brick and mortar kitchen supplemented by her food truck kitchen. I'm gonna digress for just a minute. Commissary for me was a confusing word, uh, because well, the, the, the Health Department definition of a commissary uh, is different than the general population accepted or definition of a commissary. What it means is that you have to have triple sinks, the head washing sink. You have to have adequate uh, refrigeration and freezer storage. You have to have the, the, the ability to keep hot foods hot and cold foods cold, and, and all of that is part of the commissary issue. Uh, and a couple of the food vendors, uh, I'm thinking, my memory is that Mike Doolittle said, yeah, if the food truck was part of a brick and mortar establishment, uh, uh, he would be more amenable to it. Um, but so there is some modest acceptance by s- a couple of the restaurateurs that I talked to Friday and, and over the weekend, that said, yes, if it's part of a brick and mortar establishment, then they feel differently than about a food truck that's rolling in and taking business away on the weekend. Um, because that brick and mortar is already paying all of the same dues that the rest of the brick and mortars are paying. Uh, so, so I think that that's an area that we might refine an ordinance on about whether or not a brick and mortar can use a supplemental food truck. It's kind of my vague understanding uh, that, that rules have been relaxed some during this COVID pandemic. Marshall may know, know more information. I have more information on, on, on that aspect. Uh, I'm gonna go, wanna talk briefly about taproom. Uh, and the taproom would very much like to have a food truck because they do not have a kitchen. And as Chris, I think is his name, that runs the, owns the taproom, half-owner, uh, uh, munchies and alcohol go good together. Uh, people stay at the establishment longer when they're able to eat. Uh, and he, the, the, where he is renting uh, a space from, leasing space from, he doesn't have the room to put in a kitchen. So a food truck could be a good solution for him. But if he can't put in a kitchen, can, does he have the space or the, or the leaseholder's permission to put in a full commissary? And I don't know the answer to that. The other issue that I have is, is if, uh, if the taproom can get away with a food truck, no, I said that wrong. If the taproom can, can, can stay in business using a food truck kitchen and, and uh, uh, Bennett's Fish Shack has a full kitchen, there's an unfair playing field, uh, and perhaps just, just in property tax that is paid to the city. Tax on Bennett's establishment is a whole lot more than tax on a forty thousand dollar tent food truck.
And that's where we have to realize, you mentioned it earlier, that food trucks are a cash business. If the city thinks that they're going to be able to collect sales tax on the food items in any kind of an accurate way, we're all kidding ourselves. And so the cost of entry needs to be accounted for, for the fact that we're not gonna have honest reporting. I apologize to any out-of-town food truck owners that are upset by my saying that, but uh, we're not going to have an account of accurate uh, receipts, and so the city is going to lose out on tax revenue. So the cost of entry for those food trucks needs to be uh, adjusted, in my opinion, for, for the obviousness of, of the under-reporting.
So Eleanor, let me, let me weigh in for just a second, and then I'll give you the floor. I specifically asked Diane that question in my conversation today. And, and what I was unclear of is how do we collect revenue from food trucks during can, during current convention center events? And the answer is, they are all charged a flat fee. Whether they're a food truck or whether they're selling belts or whether they're selling knives or t-shirts, they're all charged a flat fee. And the city does not check the receipts. Uh, the city has tried that in the past and, and it's very difficult to get an accurate assessment, as you have already stated. Uh, so, so that works during convention center events, but that doesn't work if food trucks are allowed unfettered access to the city, not during convention events. Uh, um, uh, so, so that's kind of a little bit of a different topic. But the thing I wanted to share is currently, the way the city gets paid is, is the city charges conventions to get a face of, of, of a flat fee. Go ahead, Eleanor. I, I'm sorry, you said something, Rich, I didn't hear.
Space rental.
Yes, space rental, exactly. Eleanor, your, your turn.
Um, well, you know, one thing we have to keep in mind, um, we've heard, I know, or at least I have heard that the restaurants have had a hard time keeping up with business this summer. But they're kind of under the, the constraints of lack of employees because of COVID and because of unemployment being paid and can't get workers. And that picture could well change next year.
That's true. And here's, here's a little more insight into that subject. Again, during my conversation with Diane, Diane belongs to an association that includes virtually every restaurateur on the, on, on, on Western Washington, uh, or at least on the Olympic Peninsula. Uh, and, and so she attends that meeting, I think, once a month, but I don't remember exactly. Uh, and her point is that every business, every food business in the state is having the same issue uh, with, with employees and, and, and staffing. Every restaurant on, on, on the Olympic Peninsula has days that they are closed because they just don't have staffing. Uh, and, and again, I think we're all in agreement, that will change once the COVID uh, crisis has been, has, has, has resolved itself. So next year may be a whole different show than this year. And I think that any, any change to the ordinance that we are going to propose is not for this year. It's as Rich has already said, it's for at earliest next year. Uh, and maybe even only the year after that, because I'm not sure, as slow as legislation moves, if we could actually get anything proposed, drafted, uh, accepted and enacted into law. I'm not sure we could do that before next summer. Uh, as we see with the co-op plant, it's a slow, laborious process uh, as it should be. Um, so, any other comments now? If there's no other comments, I would like to share a little more insight. Most of that is captured in the document I sent. Uh, and I had a specific uh, conversation with specific numbers with Ron, I forgot Ron's last name. I've got it written down uh, at, at the food shack, at, not at the fish shack at, at Bennett's. And Ron's example is right straight to the point. When food trucks are in town, he loses on average twenty-five tickets a day. An average ticket is thirty-two dollars. That's eight hundred dollars a day he loses. On a three-day weekend, uh, that's twenty-four hundred dollars, and assuming there's twenty-five weekends in a food truck season, that's sixty thousand dollars. Bennett's alone, one restaurant revenue, that restaurant loses. The impact to the city allowing un- The impact to the city allowing unfettered food truck access is huge. So so, um, uh, on the other hand, there are a couple of businesses uh, that are currently or would like to use. I'm not sure what Brady does at Roasters. I'm not sure how he uses his food truck. But that might use them as a supplemental kitchen. Uh, I, June told me that she's able to expand her menu at the Double Barrel because she has that supplemental kitchen in the back. She could not use it out front. Uh, she can't vend from, she can't, she can't have customers come up to the food truck. She's just using it as a kitchen. That's a whole different kettle of fish and she's paying her fair share of taxes to the city. So so I see splitting food truck discussion up into a couple of or three different segments in one. The the whether or not food trucks should after COVID, whether or not food trucks should be allowed to be used as supplementary kitchens. Uh, that would be one topic that needs refinement. Um, whether or not we need to allow food trucks that are not city-owned food trucks, whether or not we should allow them in the city at all other than is already being done at the convention center. Uh, um, so that's that's another topic. Uh, and then a third topic is whether or not a food truck can replace a kitchen, and that's partially, I think, up to the city legislators. But whatever the city decide, it is absolutely ruled by the health department. Part of that package I submitted to all of you uh, has the health department rules. It's a long document. Uh, I tried to skim through it. It was overwhelmed, but I tried to glean out some of those things that are specifically related to food vending. Um, so any thoughts on on three separate food truck issues and addressing them individually and then crafting a unifying ordinance? Eleanor.
I think they are separate issues. I think particularly if the being used as a kitchen rather than being used for sales to customers, I I think that is a whole different question.
I I agree. That's that's a whole different issue. Uh, and and Marshall, you, if you're willing to weigh in, uh, uh, you, I think have a better grasp on the situation than I have. What are your thoughts?
You're muted, Marshall.
You're still muted, Marshall.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I don't know if I've got a better grasp on it, but I can tell you I stepped right in the middle of it with Ocean Pours. Um, and and most of my research, um, you know, into the the subject of food trucks and and Ocean Pours' um, request was, um, as it's been noted, somewhat different, and then he wants to use it as a supplemental kitchen. Um, along with his supplemental dining room, i.e. the tent, um, to open a full-scale restaurant in support of his uh, taproom. While it sounds like a great business plan, um, the the vending in the zoning just didn't lend itself to clear interpretation as to whether the intent of of the legislation is to allow that type of vending. In the past, uh, you know, any food trucks coming into town have been shut down, um, wholesale. So in consideration of of Ocean Pours' request, I just kind of looked at the downtown area, how many businesses in the downtown area that were not restaurants, but had um, storefronts that if they were to set up a tent and and get a a food vending trailer or something similar to the proposal or the request from Ocean Pours, how many more restaurants or quasi restaurants could we have in the downtown core uh, competing with our brick and mortars who've made a significant investment in what they have today? I know in my tenure as a as the wastewater collection division uh, crew chief, um, just about all the restaurants that have been discussed today, the brick and mortars have put significant amounts of money into upgrades for uh, either capacity or grease traps. I know uh, Bennett's cut their floor up and put thousands and thousands of dollars of investment into their brick and mortar just to comply with the grease ordinance. Um, and I know there are a couple of others that have done, you know, similar upgrades, uh, hood installations and other things that are you know, fairly significant from a development standpoint. So that was my experience. Um, what I would look for as as the planner would be for good, clear legislation. So that when somebody comes in and says, I'd like to, I would like to set up a a vending trailer or a food service trailer or something like that, that I can point to the ordinance and say clearly, yes, the community is behind that, or no, it's not. That would be my request.
Marshall, and and I agree with you. If if my dog in in the in the hunt is is if the planning commission takes it on, and it's a little bit of a daunting task to craft just that ordinance that's that's clear and straightforward because the existing ordinance is so vague. Uh, uh, my personal opinion, if it was seriously challenged in court, that 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 the city could not adequately defend the existing ordinance. But I'm not a lawyer. I'm 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 just guessing. Before we go on, I I would like to uh, recognize that uh, Tanya has joined the discussion uh, as 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 the fifth commissioner. Um, so, um, here's a couple of thoughts that was expressed by one or more of the business persons that I talked to. And and one of them is as a business grows and they outgrow their existing space, they move into a larger space. Well, there are several unoccupied restaurants that Ocean Pours could move to. The the Viettel is is a prime example. Uh, and and so a a second comment that was proffered is is one of our tasks that we just finished was was residential, um, aesthetics. I'm I'm getting a middle block. And and so the question was posed is how would we, the city, residents, commissioners, businesses, how would we all feel as we drive down Point Brown Avenue and there's five food tents down Point Brown? Uh, and I don't think that's the look we're shooting for. And if they're not to be on Point Brown, then why would we allow them to be anywhere else? Uh, and that was the question that was posed. I think it's a very valid question. Uh, and so so my my response as a resident to Ocean Pours might be if 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 you are as profitable as it appears that you are and you want to add food to your business, then move across the street to Viettel. Uh, um, and and lease or buy or whatever requires to do that. Uh, and 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 keep the playing field level. Uh, um, so any 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 other comments on the subject? Rich.
I don't want to get us uh, into the weeds much. I I think that I'm gonna spitball an idea here. We could tackle something easy first. I uh, I don't want to pick on any one particular business, but I'm going to guess, and this is very uneducated guess, that there's probably not a restaurant peer that's going to want to make the entry into the restaurant business easier for some than it has been for them. So that being said, and what a political hot topic uh, it could be to be using a food truck only as a kitchen instead of adding on a building. I I would like for us to consider something that we might be able to accomplish quicker, which is, again, with the help of the stakeholders. Convention Center Parking Lot, maybe the old Shiloh side. Do we want to have uh, our city opened up to food trucks specific weekends of the year at that specific point? And then we make the entry fee for that, whatever is reasonable for an entry fee to have a truck at a city parking lot during certain times of the year. Not in front of a business, not behind a business for retail purposes, but do we want to even open up the city to retail food truck business a few times a year at the convention center parking lot so that all could uh, participate? So I think that would be something that we could start with talking, again, with the stakeholders before we move into, you know, I mean, we we can be in meetings forever to talk about all the rest of the things that we've got on our plate in regards to food truck opportunities.
Your 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 point is well taken, and I would, I think I can shed a little bit of light on Convention Center Parking Lot. The parking lot that is just to the west of the convention center that is hardly ever used, that parking lot, if if I remember the conversation correctly, that parking lot was donated to the city and and part of that, I don't sure the right word, the donation, that that it, there's a very specific requirement of how that parking lot can be used. And we'd have to check with Diane, but my understanding is setting it up as a food truck court is not what the what what the endowment, I think is the word I want, what the endowment would allow. Uh, and so so I don't think that parking lot is available. And I can't think of any place else in the city that we could establish what you're basically calling a food truck court. Food truck courts are prevalent in both Astoria and Portland, but I have not looked at their ordinances to understand how they're, how they are, uh, how they're regulated. Dan.
When we first had, excuse me, when we first had Harley Harley Weekend uh, many, many years ago, that particular parking lot was filled with vendors, the whole thing.
Okay, I I I I may have misconstrued. Uh, I'm, you know, I'm I'm dredging up an old, old memory. Uh, I know that there are some strings attached to that parking lot. I don't know the details of the strings.
I'm assuming that was, I'm assuming that was Mr. Hem Street that donated that parking lot?
I I don't know. I don't remember.
Shiloh.
Well, the the conversation that I remember that we couldn't do, somebody wanted to put the tsunami tower there using as parking. Uh, and that was not allowed.
Okay, so so so.
I think that could be a possibility, like if you say they can come in on Friday and have to leave by Sunday. Certain certainly weekends a year. I would think that would, but we'll, we'll check that out.
It's uh, use use the uh, Convention Center Parking West Lot as food truck court.
Hey, Tanya, is that your phone number showing up that ends in five two nine? Okay, who's ever on five two nine should probably mute if that's possible. Thank you.
Um, I've lost my train of thought. Um, the the so a second, a second topic of discussion, and Rich, you 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 touched on it. Uh, but and and again, I'd like Marshall's opinion or maybe Marshall saying craft the ordinance and then he'll just enforce it. Uh, but should businesses after COVID, should businesses be allowed to use a food truck as a supplemental kitchen? And the provision is that they have a brick and mortar kitchen to start with. Is is that something that that sounds reasonable? I know that some of the restaurateurs I talked to said, yeah, because they're paying their share of the freight. Comments?
Um, this is Tanya. I think that in the case of Ocean Pours, where they have a really successful vibrant local business, if they wanted to bring in food trucks to support that, I would I would think that would be nice. Like, I just don't understand how it benefits our community to restrict people to the point that they can't do what other um, places all over the country are doing.
And and Tanya, you missed part of the meeting. The shortness that is is Bennett Fishack specifically uh, had hard numbers, and if a food truck was allowed uh, twenty-five weekends out of the year, he would lose sixty thousand dollars, hard numbers, sixty thousand dollars a year in revenue. And that would put him out of business. And I personally want restaurants to be in business come the winter time. And so to to it's it's great for the residents to be able to go and get curly fries uh, any weekend that I want to, but is it good for the city? And our job as planning commissioners is to is to kick around and and come up with what's good for the city. And so part of the of the of the uh, taprooms business model is is he's got a sixty thousand dollar, forty thousand dollar investment. And everybody else has a six hundred thousand dollar investment. He's paying taxes on forty thousand dollar investment and Bennett's paying taxes and six hundred thousand. I'm just grabbing six hundred thousand out of the air. Uh, uh, so so uh, his tent is a great business model, but it gives him an unfair advantage over every other food business in town. And so a third element that deserves to be discussed is what do we do for for uh, uh, really full weekends? And my thought, before I turn it over to anybody else, my thought is this year COVID uh, has been an exception and restaurants are crippled by lack of staff for for all of the reasons that they are. That's not going to be true post-COVID. And so the city has been able to accommodate people shopping for food uh, um, during every year, every summer except this summer. And then I have kind of a of of an ancillary thought, when I keep hearing about food trucks and and fast food and I drive through downtown on on a a crowded weekend and I look at the line at McDonald's, those people are waiting just as long in line at McDonald's as they would wait to get served in a brick and mortar. So so I think that the the idea that food trucks gives better access to food is to some degree a myth. Rich.
Let's ask Marshall a quick question because you know, Tanya's on a a hot subject and I really, really do see both sides. So it's 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 a big struggle for me. Marshall, you talked about a requirement of an existing restaurant. Bennett's has been there for decades as different food establishments. What made them have to dig up and put in oil separators? Was that a city mandate? Is that something that's that's required by restaurants?
Yeah, that was a city mandate. Um, the the original uh, tavern or bar or whatever that was located in that facility, um, they weren't cooking at the volume that Bennett's was planning and as a food establishment um, revises their business plan and and uh, basically increases their capacity or whatever. We look from, you know, several different angles within the city, you know, police, fire, uh, water supply, sewer coming out of the building, that kind of thing. And if they're deficient in any of those areas, part of the upgrade or or part of the change in use will require an upgrade in a lot of instances.
So Tanya, here's here's an honest question, and I've got no slant either way. Does a business that doesn't have a kitchen, do they, does, I mean, you know, I'm the motorhome king. I I'm telling you with all sincerity that a motorhome slash food truck does not have the same facilities as a built-in kitchen. Whether you want to talk about fresh run running water or just the ability to empty the sinks and the sewer part of it. So a question is posed, is it fair that a business be able to just pull up a food truck behind their establishment and cook and do all of their food service out of that versus some other person who has an existing brick and mortar who not only can't just use what they have, is required to put in oil-water separators and such? So it's a really sticky subject for me because I don't want to, you know me, I hate Big Brother. I love free market. But it's, it's a difficult question for me.
Um, I agree. I see both sides as well, and I I agree with um, Richard that we want to protect the businesses that make an investment in this town year round. Um, I've also noticed that line at McDonald's, and I would say McDonald's could probably use some competition. Um, I I know you get this as a business owner that it, you don't want to be restricting people's potential for growth. Um, it's, I guess, I don't feel informed enough to really honestly even make any kind of opinion about this other than I have seen in a lot of places where food truck um, gatherings are really cool and really fun, and I think that Ocean Shore's Um, gatherings are really cool and really fun and I think that Ocean Shore's. Really should be trying to figure out how to support. That sort of. Vibe here and I mean, that's, that's what we need to do and we need to bring the life back to this town.
That's a little bit of a different vibe. Then. Hey, I'm just gonna buy a food truck and use that for my kitchen at my existing business instead of building.
So, so I went away for just a moment and and.
Right, right.
Look, part, part of Chris's plan, if allowed a food truck, is it wouldn't actually be a food truck. He could take the wheels off of it. Because his plan, as he expressed it to me, would be to park the truck. And and people would not buy out of the truck. You would go up to the to the point of sale, place your order. The food truck would cook the order and bring the food back to the point of sale inside the tent. And then you'd go and 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 pick your food up. So in all fairness to 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 Ocean Pores. Uh, uh, they don't want to use it as a food truck. They want to use it as a kitchen, but Rich, your comment is absolutely spot on. Uh, and and how does he handle all of those, uh, commissary? Uh, requirements that are mandated by the Department of Health, uh, and and. I've never been in the 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 tap room. I drove by, uh, over the weekend just because I wanted to see it. And 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 I didn't stop, uh, um, so I have zero experience, uh, with with what's going on there. But I am told that he's running a very profitable business and part of me says. Yeah, part of the reason he's so profitable is he doesn't have to say, he doesn't have the same overhead. That Bennett's has or that Marty's has, that Marty's has. Fat Marty, although it's small, it's another brick and mortar and he has to meet all of those requirements that Bennett meets. Uh, he has to meet all of the commissary requirements that the Department of Health enforce. Uh, um, and so, so I think that it is important. That the playing field is level. Across the city, Eleanor.
I think as I listen to this conversation, it gives them an absolute unfair advantage. Over restaurants that have invested in a kitchen and a sitting area. I certainly see why they want it because then people stay and they drink. To get bored.
Right.
But if you look at his investment versus all our like investment in a like business. Versus the investment of Bennett's. Um, or the other restaurants in town. It absolutely gives him an unfair financial advantage.
And and. I I think that that point is well taken. Another comment that I heard from one of the restaurateurs that I talked to. And and I don't know the answer to this. I'm just posing the question is, is the electrical strip cord? That is being used to provide illumination inside the tent, is it up to code? Are the, whatever they are, one hundred and seventy-five thousand BTU heaters, are they up to code? Uh, and and. I got the impression based on that conversation and I confess, I'm not informed. I'm 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 repeating the conversation. Uh, um, uh, so, so the.
Well, let let's stop picking on Ocean Pores. They're a fabulous business.
They are.
The much success, uh, I'd rather we focus back up on, do we want to allow food trucks in town or not? As a primary rather than are we going to allow food trucks as a kitchen? I mean, he could have a food truck and it could be across the street at the convention, at the convention center. I mean.
Good point. Let's get back to the question at hand.
Can it, can I comment for just a minute before we leave this?
Please, yes.
Um, and and I think Ocean Pores is a great place. They serve a great beer and and I don't want anybody to think that I'm picking on them. Um, but what I'm, what I'm concerned about is the ability. I mean, I'm looking at the open space around the downtown core, um, with other businesses that are. That are not necessarily food establishments. And it wasn't, it wasn't a year and a half or two years ago that, um. That the now sitting Ocean Pores building was not a food establishment. And, um, I I just want it to be considered that if we're going to do remote kitchens and tents. Or or auxiliary kitchens and tents to existing structures that are not food establishments. That the whole downtown core could take on a distinctly different look in a very short period of time if, uh. You know, if if we go forward with allowing, you know, auxiliary components to a brick and mortar.
And and I think that's a valid, very, very, very valid point. And that's part of why I think we're having this discussion is is what do we want the city to look like? What do we want the city to feel like? And Tanya, I I hear and respect, we want to inject the fund back in, uh, into the city. But I'm not sure that the fund has ever left the city because when I drove through town over these last couple of weekends. Town looked pretty full to me. Town seems to me to be much fuller than it has ever been, even with this COVID pandemic. Uh, so, so, um. And that's why we're having this discussion. Other comments?
I think I'd like to point of let's get back to should we allow. Um. This and Ocean shows rather than getting sidetracked. With do we allow extensions to buildings? I think that's a whole other question.
Okay, so so let's let's focus on that. Do we allow, uh? Do we allow non-convention center events? Do we allow food trucks? To to have access, uh, when they're not connected to a convention center event. I'm not sure if I phrase that correctly. But I think everybody understands what I'm trying to pose, uh, and what's what's your opinion? And and. So I have my opinion, but I'll let other people go first. Anybody? Eleanor.
I don't have a problem with picking out, you know, three or four. Events a year and allowing food trucks, but I would like to see it very much limited. So we don't hurt the businesses. That are here year round and we don't end up without restaurants in the winter time.
So what if, what weekends would you allow food trucks or have you had enough time to think about that?
I I haven't thought about what particular weekends or events. We know one example, they they probably already had, um. Food trucks at at that, um, motorcycle event that we just had.
Yeah, that was a convention center event and and although I didn't go, I didn't attend. I I know there has always been food trucks at previous that type of event.
But if we pick out some some large events that does not involve the city. Um, maybe that's a place to start and and try it out for a year. See how it works out. You don't have to jump in a hundred percent.
Go ahead, Rich.
So, yes. I think Diane could give us a list of the busiest weekends. In Ocean Shore, simple enough, obviously, starting with Memorial Day weekend. And. I know that there will, there will be conflicts at certain, on certain weekends. As to whether or not a convention center parking lot could or couldn't be used. So I think one needs to think about what's a backup. If it's not at the convention center, where's another place? I know the city has a parking lot not too far off chance. So. We should focus, number one, what are the weekends? Number two, what are the the locations? And I don't want them personally willy-nilly all around the city. I think they should be. More like Tanya's aspect of it's a a food truck. Area. And what does that look like?
Marshall and then Tanya.
Yeah, um, I I just happened to notice this this summer while driving through Seabrook. And I hate to make any comparisons, um, between them and us, but I noticed that they do have a small. Uh, area and it and it's just one little area in the Seabrook complex where they've got a couple of food trucks, two or three food trucks. And that's in concert with their brick and mortars down there. So I don't know if they have a business plan that they've thought out. Uh, if they've re, or if they've already invented the wheel that we're looking for. As far as finding that balance, I don't know if they run them, uh. Year round up there or specific weekends or whatever. It might be worth a phone call or a trip up there to to see what, uh. What they did to make it work for them without. Uh, hurting their brick and mortars.
So, so I have a comment and then I'll I'll give it to Tanya and and my 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 question is. Is there, is there a couple of other commissioners that would be willing, uh, to check? Uh, the ordinances at Seabrook, Astoria and Portland to see specifically how they're handling. Food trucks because all three of those communities, uh, have food truck. I'm under the impression that all three of those communities have food truck courts, uh, that operate. Basically year round, although in the wet seasons. There may not be very many trucks, uh, uh, so is anybody willing to take on researching those? Zoning or or ordinances?
Let me ask a question first, Richard. Aren't we limited by access to bathrooms? As to where we could.
That's, that's, that's the Department of Health requirement and and the current requirement, if my memory serves. Is you have to be within five hundred feet of a food and water bathroom with hot water.
So, you know, we can't say that the city has a parking lot. On XYZ street. It has to be a parking lot that has access. To, uh, public restaurants that also have hot water.
That's correct. Tanya.
Sorry about that. Okay, um. I I think Sandy, Oregon is a small community that, uh, has some kind of food truck. Is area. And I would recommend looking at Sandy. I think a smaller city might, um, be useful. Um, so I have a couple of thoughts and again, I just, I really don't feel very educated about this, but one thought is that. We want to support local businesses and we want to keep dollars here in the harbor, so. If it's a local business operating the food truck, the dollars are staying here in the harbor versus somebody coming from. Tacoma or Seattle or wherever, and I think that we really. Need to have a way to give preference to local. Businesses and then the other thing is, um. It seems like if we just as a city chose to allow this, we could set up, we're gonna do X number of trucks allowed X number of days. And there's a fee for that permit, right? So it's like, it's kind of an exclusive thing and you're lucky to get it. Um. Those are my thoughts.
I think those are valid thoughts and and my question, uh, and Marshall Mayor may not have some knowledge on. Uh, um, I I'm gonna digress just a little bit, uh, but there's a, there's a direct correlation and parallel. Uh, the, as we discovered during the comp plan. Uh, um, work that, uh, we cannot say, we the city cannot say we are not going to allow. A a Home Depot. What we can say is that any building has to meet these requirements. Um, and so when I translate that to the food truck question. Uh, uh, how would we legally craft an ordinance? That says a local business can have a food truck, but the guy from Aberdeen or or Olympia cannot operate his food truck. I suspect and I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. I suspect that we could run into a legal hurdle that that we couldn't pass. Any, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think you're probably pretty close there in that, um. You know, one of the things that occurred over the last ten years or whatever is the, uh, the manufactured home market. Um, was being, you know, basically discriminated against in the the stick built home market and. I I could see the same type of, um. You know, if the legislation doesn't exist already, I think there's probably some precedence there.
Any other thoughts? I I I don't know how to how to open that can, uh, to find out. Maybe then we can ask the the mayor to ask the city attorney that specific question. Uh, and and then give the answer back to us. Is that, is that a possibility?
Um.
Somebody else started to chime in, was that?
Sorry, yeah, Tanya, um, I was just thinking, so when you issue a permit, this is just a hypothetical scenario if we choose to. Um, allow this in the city. When you issue a permit, you could have a checklist of, I like, where are you a local business? Are you? Um, I don't even know how you would do this without discriminating, but you could give extra points to someone that's local, right? I think that. A lot of government programs favor people from this area because economically depressed, so maybe we could get away with it under that umbrella. I don't know.
Well, those are, those are questions. I think that's a valid idea and that's the kind of question I think we need to get legal advice on. Uh, because it would just be pointless to spend a whole bunch of time and resources. Crafting an ordinance that a lawyer would look at, take one look at and say, yeah, this this can't fly. So I'd like to have an idea of what direction we can take, um, before we start spinning work on crafting any kind of a change to the ordinance. Any other thoughts? Uh, Rich.
We're at a point where we need to have stakeholders in a meeting with us, listening to what they have to say as experts instead of us rambling along as. Planning commissioners with our ideas.
Mm-hmm.
So I I I think that I I. Agree with you. I think that there's not very much more to be said in this discussion, but I go back to a question I posed way at the beginning. Uh, are any of you willing to work individually or together? Uh, uh, and contact all of the stakeholders and as I said, I have. A a spreadsheet list of all of those stakeholders that have emails and those stakeholders who only have phone numbers. And I personally think that it, the best way to get, to give everybody a voice is to contact them in person. Invite them to a meeting and also invite them to to forward their written comments. And I'm happy to be the central collection point, use my email as a collection, uh, Rich, go ahead.
I I I look at this kind of like I look at a menu to a restaurant when I go into it. When I've got twelve pages of menu items, it's makes it a little difficult. I'd rather see us. Pick. Five or six. Uh, stakeholders. Get them in a meeting or two, whatever it ends up being. Narrow down the ideas and then reach out to the balance of the other twenty or whatever it might be. Restaurants and and get their input based on some intelligent input from actual stakeholders.
So, uh, let me comment and then I'll give it to Eleanor. Uh, how would we pick those, those five select committee members? Uh, and are they do? Do, is a com, planning commissioner included in that select committee? Or is it just food businesses? What's your vision there? And then it's Eleanor.
Well, my vision, it 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 could be simple. We could ask the city for the top blank largest. Restaurateurs and start chipping away to see if. Those top five or six want to be involved. They're not all gonna say yes. Until we get. Five or six candidates and then we have a meeting like we just had today to narrow down some of the topics. And then from there we we reach out.
My, 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 my issue with that is is. Fat Marty deserves just, just as much deserves a seat at the table is 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 Ron Lambert at 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 Bennett's Fishack. And under your suggestion, it looks to me like Fat Marty would be excluded from being on that committee.
Potentially, potentially Fat Marty might be excluded. But Fat Marty is at best a part-time business. That's not paying as much taxes as hypothetically a Ron Lambert or somebody else. I I don't know the specifics. I don't want to be disrespectful to any business owner.
Right.
Uh, but, yeah, you know, life isn't always fair. We need to start somewhere with a good. Solid group of business owners that know how to run restaurants that can then give us some basic. Points that we can then go out to the balance of the restaurant owners and at that point, if we want to. Call out Mr. Mr. Marty, uh. He would have or she would have complete input. On the, on the ideas that came up in the roundtable, but you can't have thirty people in a roundtable.
Point taken, Eleanor.
I think that first we need to come up with a date that's reasonably. Far out in the future to give it a chance to be organized. And then I don't have a problem with contacting or calling. The main restaurants in town and and. Given them a time and a date where we'd like to have a round table. And, you know, put notices out in the community if any other restaurant or. Or bar with a restaurant would like to attend the meeting, um, I I think that's the best way to do it. I suspect that what we will get is the main players in town will want to all show up. For a meeting.
Well, I I know in my conversation, uh, one of the piece, players that I talked with, uh, is the go-kart, uh, Mike, uh. Uh, Mike Doolittle, uh. Uh, uh, he had lots and lots of 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 fruitful ideas. They're included in that, in the 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 information I I emailed. So here's a, here's a, Dan, do you have your hand up? Oh, please, go ahead, then I'll have a thought.
Well, I I agree with Rich almost a hundred percent that we've got to keep it to a five or six max. Because the meeting, we won't get anything fruitful out of a meeting if it's too big. And I would think, I would hope that this is near and dear to the restaurant guys or women. Uh, that they would want to do it, uh, that we could put it together within for the next meeting. If not, we could push it off till the following meeting. But. It's it's hard to control a meeting. It's it's got a lot of people in it.
I I agree with you. Uh, uh, and so I've got a couple of thoughts on on the subject. One, as I said at the beginning, I have Diane's list of with phone numbers. And, uh, with phone numbers for everybody and emails for about, uh, almost maybe a little over half. Uh, so, uh, I'm happy to send that list to all of you. I can give it to Dan, Dan can distribute it. And then Eleanor, I would ask you, uh, would you go down that list and contact? And here's my thought, uh, is, is that if we invite all of those. Uh, uh. Key players and 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 so we get a list back and 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 we get twelve people that say we're interested. Uh, in being part of that meeting, I know that Mike and Ron both said they would love to be part of that committee. And then we could either pick names out of a hat or or use some other criteria to say. These five will make up that meeting and then notify them there. I'm I'm proposing an idea, uh, that 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 these are the five that are gonna be the select committee. Uh, and and invite them to the next meeting. So that's the first idea and comments on that. And then I have a second part to that. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, I I think you can do that. We can pick five, say five people that are part of the, we'll call them a committee. But the rest of them have equal opportunities to the public comment.
Exactly. That's true.
We have to make sure they understand that just because they didn't get picked, doesn't mean we don't want to hear from them.
Exactly. And I think we can make that clear in the invitation.
But the main discussion has to go on with just those five people. And then another thing is, I don't know when we're gonna get back to library. I I thought we'd get back today, but the mayor said no. But would it be better to do this? I I guess soon would work.
Well, I I would, I'd like to interject with Dan. Uh, Dan, if the city council can meet at the convention center, I would, in a situation like we're discussing here. I'd like to just. Reg it to the mayor that we would like to meet at the convention center. So we have plenty of space. You could bring in the six people, none of us, nobody's in any trouble, space wise. Um, and then for Eleanor's information, uh. Galway Bay, they have a food truck. They raised their hand as a potential person to to help. Um, Ocean, uh, Ocean Roasters, Ocean Beach Roasters. Uh, Brody's got a food truck. He raised his hand. We know that, uh, the barbecue place that she's got one, two. Uh, obviously Ron, and then I know that Pirates Cove raised their hand. I'm sure Ocean Pores would raise their hand. So I just want you to know, there have been some people that have already said, if we did something like this, they'd like to be involved.
Yeah, I, we, we can't meet at conventions there because they charge us. So our meeting. Our meeting, our meeting room is the library. And if I remember right, um, I I signed us up for all the dates through the end of the year. Uh, we are limited to a capacity of thirty people.
Oh, that's a big room then.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a good sized room and and we have. On one of our other subjects, Eleanor, remember, uh, nightly rentals, we had a lot of people. And they weren't friends. So, uh, but, um. We could, we could actually get, get everybody, you know, the five people. Just in the discussion and let anybody else who want to comment do the their three minute public comment. But I go back to the mayor. If this is what we're gonna do, I'll go back to the mayor again and say, we really think it would be better if we could do it. At the library. It's open for us for the twenty fourth. I, 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 the gal said, Tisha, if I remember right.
Keith.
Yeah, Keith, and and she wants to know if we're gonna make it or not. I totally know we're gonna make this one.
So a a couple of, a couple of comments. Uh, my wife is on the the library board. They met in person at the library a couple of days ago. Uh, I don't see any reason that we can't. If there's a thirty person capacity in the room, then then as Sarah posts, and Sarah, you may want to weigh in on this. As as Sarah posts, she can say that that the public is welcome, but the room has a capacity of thirty people. And and so we're we're seven, eight people with with Marshall. Uh, um, uh, that that so, so thirty minus eight is what is that, twenty twenty two? So the first twenty two people at the door get access and the other people have to, maybe we can set up some kind of a Zoom interface. Uh, um, so Eleanor, and then I'll ask Sarah to log in on that idea, to weigh in on that idea.
How many restaurants are they in town?
I didn't count them up, but my bet is like twenty six, twenty three, something like that. I I could.
I can't imagine where they're all at. Um, but I I I think we give an invitation to the main players and we ask the rest of them. If they would please email their comments, uh, and they will be given just as much consideration.
I, um, I I agree that we that we ask all of the restaurants and we we ask them in person. Uh, to to submit their, um, um. To to submit their comments via email. Uh, I'm looking at Diane's list and it looks like there's, let's see. Uh. So eighteen minus four is fourteen and. It looks like there's twenty seven establishments on Dan's list, if I counted right. Uh, um, uh, so Sarah, what's your idea on being able? To have the meeting at the library and if the room is overflowed, that we can also have a. Uh, a Zoom interface and it wouldn't be every person at the table has a computer. It would be one computer so that everybody at, everybody who wants to listen in could hear the discussion, not necessarily see the discussion. Is that a possibility?
So that's not even really up to you guys. I'm required for governor's order to provide Zoom, whether you have an in person meeting or not. And based on working with the businesses, the majority are gonna come to you via remote status because it's in the middle of the day. So that's been the common theme. You can have an in person meeting, just like the city council. And there'll be remote access and the majority will come via remote access anyway.
Um. And and Dan, I want to go to you. Uh, I I agree that having an in person roundtable is much easier to. Con- to to conduct the meeting and there's, there's perhaps a. A better information exchange in person than over Zoom. Um, but how does what Sarah say, says fit into your concept?
Doesn't bother me. Works.
Hey, Richard.
Yes.
This this first meeting needs to be like this first meeting. We need to talk.
Right.
We don't need at this particular point, although we offer it, we don't need to ask restaurateurs to. You know, hey, you need to call in to to give us public comment.
Right.
We don't have anything to comment on yet. We're having a discussion. If we're blessed, we might actually have some bullet points to pull out of this first meeting. With the restaurant stakeholders. And then we start asking for input, but we just need to have a sit down with these folks. We might, all all six of us might be amazed at what they actually tell us. Might be completely one eighty from what we're talking about here.
So so Rich, my, my question is. First, I think that there's a strong possibility that we are on a time limit. To get done whatever we're gonna get done. Uh, the city council has made it abundantly clear, uh, that the cop plan and zoning, uh, is a higher priority. But all of that is on hold until the cop plan is enacted. So we can't, we can't give our input about zoning or 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 any of the action points or any of the other things. So that was discussed on the seven twelve city council meeting until the cop plan is approved. So how do we, how do, my question then is how do we select and get those five? Uh, select committee members to the next meeting? Because I think that we want to have this happen sooner rather than later.
All right, I agree. And 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 just the, the, the phone calls I met made, they all said they could show up at two o'clock on a Tuesday. But so that doesn't mean that the ones I spoke to were the ones you guys are gonna choose.
That's my question, Rich, is how do we choose? How how do, how do we fairly and equitably s- select the members of the?
Draw names.
No, I don't, I'm not for that. I I, we should either have an ad hoc committee to fix the people or, uh, I'd go with Rich's original thing. We find the top five restaurants in the in the city. And and yes, it isn't fair to the guy who's a part timer at best, but still has to. To, uh, fight by all the rules, but. Those are the guys that are year round. And thrive the city's restaurant business.
Okay, so then my suggestion at this point is I think that right now we can create a list. Of of who those five people should be and invite them. And if the primary on the, on the list of the first five on the list, uh, if one of the first five on the list is not available. Then we contact the next person on the list. Is that a viable i- idea? Uh, and and who should those five be? I. Am I jumping the gun here and and saying, let's right now pick five people?
Well. That's a great question, you know, who who do you want on the committee? We we don't have access to who are the, who are the biggest restaurants. We already know that Mr. Brunstad has. You know, the second or third largest restaurant. We already know that Mr. Lambert has the first largest restaurant in town. And then it goes from there. I I like bringing people on personally that already are in the food truck business because. They've got, they know.
Okay.
They know the business. Uh, it doesn't bother, doesn't bother me to have someone that. Uh, you know, no offense, Ocean Pores. Uh, probably should be involved in the meeting as well because this is a big deal to them.
Yeah, but it's a big deal for a different reason. I think we need to stick to the task at hand, regular food trucks.
Okay, so let's start with with the 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 list of regular food trucks. Let's start there and 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 that's, and Rich, you might know the names better, but.
You know, you know, Brody Jones at Ocean Beach Roasters, he's got a food truck. He's in Aberdeen all the time with it. Uh, you know that, uh, uh. Uh, double bear barbecue, double bear barbecue has a food truck.
Uh huh.
We know that, uh, uh.
You said Galloway has a food truck.
Galway Bay, Christopher Doyle, he's got a truck that he uses at events. Uh, those are ones that I know of. Does anybody else have?
Well, we're gonna invite, well, we got, we're gonna have to invite.
I think you invite your, your, well, Pat's gonna be here anyway. I think you invite Ron because he's the largest restaurant in town. Eleanor?
Um, I don't think we should be inviting just people that have food trucks because they've obviously got a bias. I think we need to clearly give both sides of this issue equal time on an equal platform.
Eleanor, you're, you're correct.
So we're also assuming that everybody's gonna say yes. I'm not sure everybody's gonna say yes.
We're, we're, we, we have already said we want a meeting, we want five committee members. Uh, and so what I've got down right now is for, uh, Brody, June, Christopher and and Ron. But and I would say let's put at least three or four more names on that list. Uh, and I think that this, uh, uh, this is already a good priority. I personally suggest that we invite Mike Doolittle, uh, and and although he's not a huge restaurant. Uh.
Yeah, he's really not in the restaurant business. He's got ice cream. I'm not sure what other types of food products he has.
The 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 reason I in I I, in my mind to include Mike is every time that I have listened to him speak at city council. Uh, he has a a very realistic and very informed point of view. Uh, so I I think that he brings a point of view that perhaps is beneficial to us listening to. But I'm 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 just throwing that name out. It's not my decision. Uh, what other names do we want to include?
Well, what other restaurants? I mean, I I I agree with Rich. He's not really a food.
Okay.
You've got, uh, Jim at, uh, Pirates Cove. Uh, I know he was a hand raiser. Uh, I I'm sorry, I don't know the person that's running Rusty Anchor. Uh, you've got Eric at the Pizza Place on Ocean Shores Boulevard. Um, you know, I'm just throwing, just spitballing names just to throw them out there.
Whi- which pizza place is that? And I thought the Rusty Anchor went out of business. I'm confused about who the Rusty Anchor is.
Uh, the old Mariah's, it, well, I appreciate that everybody's not sure about what days anybody's open anymore, but.
It isn't rusty. When you say the old Mariah's, isn't that the the Polynesian?
Yes, it's.
That's Polynesian resort. Rusty Anchor is the name of the restaurant.
Okay, um, uh, how, um.
So this is Tanya. I just have a concern about, um. The exclusivity of just picking people that we know. I feel like we should make a blanket invitation to. Pretty much every restaurateur in town and see who responds and we can certainly encourage the people that we know to apply. And we can, you know, I mean, pick them, but I feel like everyone deserves a chance.
Ton- Tanya, I'm I'm hearing what you're saying and and I'm not discrediting it. I'm offering a different point of view. And that point of view is, I think it's important to have this discussion at our next meeting. And if we send out an open invitation, we're gonna, it's next meeting that we that we get the response. And it's the meeting after that before we actually put any rubber on the road. I don't think that we can afford to take that much time. And as Rich has already pointed out, and as I started this discussion with. Every vendor in the city will have an invitation to and to to submit their public comment or their email comment. And I again offer my email address as the recipient. And then I will distribute those emails to Dan who can send all of those emails. So every restaurateur in the city will have a personal invitation to submit their comment, but not necessarily be part of this committee. Uh, and and I I just, I feel, and I'm asking other opinions. I feel it's important to to select those people now and invite them. And and and, uh, I can make the call or Eleanor can make the call. I think she volunteered. Uh, what's your thoughts? Any thoughts?
I I'm just not comfortable with this. Thrown out, we should invite and do it at the next meeting. I I think we need to take a deep breath and be a little better organized or at least on the same book and page. As to how we should handle this, and I don't think we are.
So I'm I'm hearing you and and, uh, Dan, what's your sense in your conversations with the mayor? About how much time we are going to be able to to devote to the subject?
I have no clue. It's caught now fast. Council gets the plot, the cop plan out. And once, once they, I think they finally finish preliminary. Um, preliminary approval. But then they have to go out for a public comment on the whole cop plan and pass it. And the the way they move, uh, I don't know. But, but you know, instead of being. I I understand what you're saying, Eleanor, but we've got to come up with some criteria. And and I I think we, maybe we go back to Rich's original thing. Let's pick the top five restaurants in Ocean Shores.
And and I I think that the list that Rich has submitted, uh, in my sense of 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 the businesses. I think that we now have six names that are pretty close to the top five businesses, you know.
We need to verify that. So Ri- Richard, you can make a quick call to Angie. And and I bet you she would give you the, and you could ask for the top ten volume restaurants in Ocean Shorts.
That's a good idea.
And in that way, we're not being, we're not picking them. It's a top ten. We go down five. We keep going down till we get five members.
And so what I'm hearing you say, Dan, uh, and let me just clarify. I talked to Angie, get the top ten. I start at the top of the list and 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 so we're picking off. In in volume order, we're picking off the top five and if. I start at the top of the list and, and, and so we're picking off in, in volume order, we're picking off the top five and if any of those say. I, I don't have the, the resources, then I just go to the next on the list. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, other than throughout Pat, because he's here anyways.
He's here anyway.
That way we get six.
I, I have a concern about the idea that somehow just because they do more volume of business, they're more qualified to speak. To us. I just, I, I think that what you guys are saying makes perfect sense. I just really want to make sure that we are being fair in our outreach to the public.
Let, let's remember, the whole point is to get bullet points down on a page.
Right.
To take these bullet points now and reach out to one hundred percent of the restaurateurs after we've got. This. Model of, of, of input. Because I agree, I would like every single restaurateur to have input. Just the odds though of having the top five volumes, they're obviously the best at what they do. They obviously want to look out for all local businesses and I'm sorry in life. Let's, let's go after the best to get the best ideas and then let's be inclusive with all the rest of the businesses. And let them have input and. You know, these top five restaurants don't get to decide the world, they just get, give us some bullet points to go back to the rest of their peers and review it with them.
And, and Rick, I, I think that, that it's really important that we all remember what, you know, that we all focus on what you just said. Our task, as I envision, our task at the next meeting is to create a list of bullet point discussions. And by getting the top five businesses, that gives us the broadest experience. To figure out what the most appropriate bullet points are. So. Are.
I'm comfortable with this only because you've mentioned a number of these top five that. Or what we assume are the top five that actually also have food trucks. So I feel like that's balanced. But I think we need to acknowledge that someone that has a very successful brick and mortar restaurant. Is probably not going to be a fan of food trucks. So we just need to be careful that we're not inviting bias.
Restaurant tours who stated the opinion that, that if the food truck was part of an established. Local brick and mortar business, they would not be opposed to that food truck operating on that business's property. And, and so, so Ron Lambert, if I remember his discussion and it's in my, it's in the document I sent to you. I'm pretty sure Ron Lambert would say, no, I don't want food trucks. So what I'd like at this point, we're gonna run out of time. What I would like, oh, we've got almost thirty minutes, is, is maybe we, do we need to, to. What's, what's, do we need a legislative action to say, this is what we're gonna do? Do we need a motion? Is that what I, what I'm saying? Do we need a motion that we're gonna pick and go forward or is it just a thumbs up? Because based on what Rich is saying and what this whole discussion is saying, I am quite willing to call Angie. Get the top ten names from her and I will call them. And I will email everybody who I have an email address for. And I will phone everybody that I don't have a, an email address and invite them to submit their public comments at the next meeting. But also invite those five top descending list to participate in the next meeting. Rich.
And, and I want to echo Tanya's concern. It's all about the question that we ask. I love surveys. I can get the answer of survey anyway. I want it, the answers to come out to be. I think the question that we're posing to these restaurateurs is. And, and we know this is the truth, the public has spoken. They'd like a pathway to food trucks. Help us come up with a plan that's fair to all concerned. Because if the question to all the restaurants is, do you want a food truck? Yes or no? Then potentially they're just gonna say no and we get nowhere. So as long as we're all focused on, on what the people want, which is a pathway to having food trucks during different parts of the year minimally. We'll get good input from all these business owners. We just have to be careful what questions we're asking. And, and try not to be offensive to any of them and, and because this is, this is their livelihood and we want to be respectful.
Rich, I, I a hundred percent agree with you and, and I want to chime in and say at no point during this entire discussion. Did anybody in this committee and this, in, in this commission, especially me, intend any, any disrespect to, to, to the taproom. I was using that as, as, as an active example. And I think he's got a great business model and although I've never. Gone to his taproom and tasted his beer. It's because I haven't gone anywhere except to medical appointments. So, so everything that you've said and keep it, this is a respectful. Harvesting of information and, and although I put survey on my thing that I sent out. I think that we're all in agreement. Survey is not what we want to do and what we do want to do is go forward with this, with this. Meeting with the select committee members included in the next meeting. Do we need a motion to do that or can we just a thumbs up on that, Dan?
Sarah, do you have an answer for that?
One more time.
We are talking about. The feasibility of contacting in descending order, the, the most viable, the, the most profitable. Food vendors in the city and inviting five of those vendors to be part of a select committee. To participate in next meeting's agenda.
Yeah, there, there wouldn't be a problem with that, if that's what you're asking.
Well, the question.
You, you broke up, Dan, say it again.
Excuse me, do we need a motion to do that?
No.
So, so then my question then. Is everybody okay with me making that phone call? Should somebody else make that phone call? I, I'm asking.
I'm okay with you making it.
Rich?
My hands are full. I appreciate the folks with extra time.
Okay, Eleanor?
I'm okay.
Uh, Tanya?
Yes, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that we give equal opportunity to people that own food trucks as well, so that we get a balanced discussion.
And, and perfect. And now I have a little bit more technical question. My, my thought is. That I will draft. An email or a letter. And. My wife is a pretty good proofreader and, and, and she has lots of experience at this kind of thing. And are you all okay just accepting what I draft as an invitation to participate? Public comments or should I send it to Dan and Dan somehow gets approval from the rest of the, of the commissioners? The trouble with that is we now have a, a serial email meeting going on and I think that's illegal. So, so how do I create a letter that is legal that I can distribute to, distribute to all of the vendors? And.
Why, why are you trying to give it to all the vendors right now? We just need to get the top blank vendors to a meeting. And from there, with whatever product is of that meeting, we then reach out.
So what I'm hearing you say, Rich, is, is that at this, at next. Meeting that we're not worried about inviting everybody to public comment that will be following meeting, this.
Have nothing to comment on yet. We haven't done anything.
That, that's more clear in my mind now. And if everybody else is, is, is okay with that. I think that I'm good now. I think I clearly understand. And is there anything else, any other points that anybody wants to bring up? Eleanor?
I think if this is clearly on the agenda for the next meeting. On the city's site, so other people have the opportunity. To say, hey, they're discussing this, I'm interested in this. So at a minimum, they can join this little meeting.
And, and I agree with you that the, the entire city has an open invitation to weigh in on public comment. And, and so what I'm hearing is there's no reason to treat this next meeting any differently than any other meeting.
Great.
So, so Marshall is a planner. Do you have any, any thoughts as before, before I turn this over back to Dan?
No, I, I like Rich's idea of getting a small group together to get some, get some, you know, ideas on the table. And start the conversation with the people that actually have, have a stake in the pie here.
Perfect. Any, anybody else have any other comments on food trucks? And if there's no other comments, then I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to Dan.
Hey, so if we're done with. Food trucks. Our next. Our next note taker is Tanya again. I'm sure she'll make it this time. Our next, my question, excuse me, meeting is August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. I'll contact the mayor and see if we can meet at the library. I'll get back with the answer. I'll also go to the mayor and ask her about the legality of limiting to. Food trucks only for brick and mortars in Ocean Shores. See if she'll pass that up.
And then, sir, I have a question for you. If we do meet at the library, you said that, that we now have to have. A Zoom connection. Do you supply the hardware to make that happen?
Yep.
Okay.
Will you be at the meeting, Sarah?
Yep.
Okay. So by you doing that, you're recording it and so we don't have our little recorder anymore.
Right.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Do I have a motion adjourned?
Just, just one question. So who will facilitate the roundtable?
I'll, I'll facilitate it.
Okay. Very good.
I have a motion adjourned.
Well, before we adjourn, my question and. Did, did any or all of you find the information that I sent out on point or useful? And, and I don't know.
It was useful.
I, I always appreciate the incredibly, the, the incredible amount of extra work that you guys put in. It's very helpful. So thank you.
Marshall, did you get a copy of all of that paperwork?
Um, I did and, and a lot of the stuff is familiar from a few weeks ago when I was researching this particular subject. So yeah, thank you.
Okay, Dan, I give it back to you. I apologize for jumping in.
That's okay. Do I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.